They just heard we were back.
I unmuted your microphone.
Okay. Anybody watch that football game over in Germany?
No, I heard it was pretty good.
An NFL game?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Which one is that?
They have Tom Brady and.
Oh, really?
Eagles.
Oh, wow.
I watched Kansas City.
Is that your team?
Well, I don't have them around no more.
I was just wondering if how the fans, they filled that place up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're gonna do World Cup viewing parties at the new stadium here. Yeah.
I guess they could make more revenue going over there. Somebody's stadium.
He used to come out after the games. We. We'd tell him his mom and dad and then people started discovering.
Scavenge, huh?
Discovering who was over there. So he could count.
And he played the, they played the National Anthem.
Guess so.
You know.
Yeah.
That is where I watched.
Big old flag out there.
Rem.
They played that.
Okay.
Watching this.
Right. I forgot it was not their football.
That's right.
You watching his kids?
Yeah, Kurt's lighting it up and.
They had seventy-seven thousand.
You're supposed to lose your job doing injury.
No, that's right. He lost it. Did he ever get well enough to? It seemed like he always favored that.
Well, Romeo brought him up to Kansas City.
Yeah, it seemed like he always favored that way, you know, to me.
Well, his, his mother said one time they went to Disney World and he'd have to sit down about every half block just to get off of it.
Yeah.
But March wanted to me, when March went up to Chicago with the Bears, he called and wanted Trent to come up there and quarterback.
After breaking my leg like he did, I wouldn't do that.
And the family said, no.
Oh, no. How March gets a kill, right?
Yeah, March, well, that's what he did to Warner.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
There was no protection for those guys.
Right. That's same way with, I think Josh.
Too. Always, yeah.
I think he'll get this quarterback knocked out too. You gotta get to him.
They haven't been around for.
I have seven o'clock.
All right. I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission, in addition to the other members of the Planning Commission.
Oh.
What you, what you kind of.
I'm the land use manager.
Our land use manager, Mel Wilson, sitting to my right and to my far left, the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Presentation Guidelines brochure and tonight's agenda, both of which are on tables just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda lists the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give me your card as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the cart at the exit to the chambers. By filling out a card, we will be able to link you to a copy of the commission's report when it goes to the county council. The commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on December 5th. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within one week of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners and their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent or emailed to the planning department. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The planning commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioners will present the request. They will be allotted fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor will be allowed five minutes, as well as persons speaking. As individuals be allowed two minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, we will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor and those in opposition are with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the commission or the county council. Purpose is to make the crowd count, part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear, well, let's, let's do the one. We have PC thirty-three dash thirty-two is being postponed. And we need a motion to request the postponement.
Make the motion for postponement.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Both eyes have it, six zero, one on the item. First petition night, PC thirty-one dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven LLC. We will deal with that at an executive meeting on December fourteenth. So with that, you want to go ahead and get started?
Here's the clicker. Good evening. Can you hear me now? Okay. Good evening, PC thirty-one dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven LLC is requesting an amended C eight for one point six eight acres located on the south side of Lindbergh Boulevard, west of Five Oaks Parkway. This location is in South County. As you can see from the land use map, the property is surrounded by a number of commercial retail uses with single-family homes on the back. Here's the aerial of the site outlined in red. This is looking south into the site. This is looking north across Lindbergh Boulevard. This is looking west along Lindbergh Boulevard. This is looking east along Lindbergh Boulevard. This is looking southeast at Lindbergh Boulevard and Five Oaks Parkway. This is south along Five Oaks Parkway. This is looking onto the property west from Five Oaks Parkway. This is continuing west on Five Oaks Parkway. This is south along Five Oaks Parkway. This is west along the southern fence. This is looking southwest towards the rear property line. This is west. East looking on the property. Northwest. And then we will have the petitioner.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Mark Doring, President Doring Engineering.
Who's that again?
Great to be back in person. I was laughing, our neighbors, the kids in the street call me Old Man Doring, but I guess I like the old face-to-face instead of the new internet stuff. So Old Man Doring's here tonight. Right here is Nick Bond. Nick is with Steve Bond Real Estate and the guy with all the gray here in the mirror. Here, which you know is Steve himself, but he can't get out of the chair, so we're gonna have Nick talk tonight. So I'd like to have Nick say a couple of words about our project first and then I'll get to the site plan. Nick?
Go ahead, Nick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am one of the owners of five seven five seven LLC. We purchased the property a little over a year ago with the hopes of having a medical user occupy the entire building. Unfortunately, after a couple of months of working with that, the deal didn't pan out. From there, we've been trying to attract other medical and office users in South County to backfill the property. Unfortunately, as I'm sure all of you know, since COVID, the office market as a whole has been hit pretty hard and in South County hit even harder. So what we're asking of you this evening is just the ability to add retail users as possible uses to fill this eighteen thousand square foot building.
Thank you, Nick. So this presentation is pretty similar to what you seen previously. Again, Mark Doring and Nick's next to me. This is the same site plan that we submitted spring of this year. We previously asked for a C eight with general and then we had it, we asked for the additional medical use back then because we thought we had a user for the whole building, actually. Tonight, all we're asking for is a use change. We're not changing the site plan. And we'd just like to include C two uses, which is our small neighborhood type uses, things like that, that fall into a wide variety of different likes of neighborhood commercial use. And with that, I've lost it.
I'm at the point sort of where's this door back here.
Oh, good. Okay. So again, Lindbergh Boulevard, this is our site. North is straight up Lindbergh Boulevard. This is Five Oaks Parkway to the east. There's our site as shown before. It's one point six acres. Again, it's been C eight for a long time. The building was built about thirty-five years ago. It's a good brick building, which makes it look nice, but it has not had been maintained at all until the bonds have gotten and they've, they've taken some steps to improve it already to attract some new users. The landlord just really didn't do a good job running that building. So to the south there, we have our three residential uses behind there. Red Lobster C eight is to our west and then Enterprise Bank is also C eight across the street and my eyes are failing at this stage in life is the Walgreens and that's in the city of Green Park across the street. You're laughing, Mel, but it'll happen to you too someday. It's an unoccupied Steak and Shake down there, one of our three unoccupied Steak and Shakes in South County. And we have a strip store C eight there has been for there, I don't know, that might be fifty-year-old building. And we have some office space over here in the C eight use there. And then Valvoline sits up in that little corner and they access through our site to get to it. This is a picture of the furniture. Again, it's a really nice brick building. The glass seals, some of them need to be replaced. We'll be doing that. We're gonna be resurfacing the parking lot, sealing it, new striping it, new landscaping and make it look nice. Attract some new vendors, but right now there's nobody in the park and it's vacant. This is a picture from the back, from the west side in the back. And this is a picture from the east side to the, again, the Five Oaks Parkway. This is a monument sign that was there. It was in disarray when we got it. We've cleaned it up. And we're probably gonna repaint that and reuse that sign, but we're gonna make it look nice. Okay, before, last time I was here, there's pictures of it just actually being blown over even, so. Here's a picture of the Valvoline site. Walgreens across the street, Steak and Shake across the street, it's in bad shape. Again, that's Five Oaks coming down our eastern property line. And this is from Five Oaks looking back to the north of the single-family dwelling that sits behind us, kind of carved out along Five Oaks there. So you can see that. And there is some mature tree buffers between us and that residence and that's really the only resident that it adjoins to us. There's about fifty-three feet from the edge of our building there to the edge of the house behind us. And all along here, there's very mature screening that goes between us and that house behind us. There's a five-foot site, put proof fence in that area there, existing, it's gonna remain. And this is the detention basin and I wanna sneak up here. It was, last time we're in here, it was overgrown and you guys said, hey, clean it up. And we have that last picture that you saw even before me. I got some pictures of what it currently looks like. We got out there and cleaned the detention basin up, which needed to be cleaned up. In fact, here they are, the detention pictures. This was actually taken November first, so it's about fourteen days old. And you can see the cactiles and all those weeds around it are gone. The grass is mowed. Looks very nice now. Here's our site plan. Again, that's our existing building, seventeen thousand square feet, two-story. Vacant. And again, we're asking for our C two uses with our C eight. We're adding one parking space. That's all we're doing. Like we said before, we're resealing, striping the entire parking lot and make it look nice. That's the existing entrance to be used in place. There's a sidewalk out there right now, but MoDOT's coming along with a sidewalk plan, so they're gonna put a new sidewalk along the front of the south Lindbergh so we don't have to, but it'll be to their standards, which is fine. Again, there's the existing parking lot. Let's see how Valvoline comes in to the, get your oil changed at Valvoline, you come along that route there. We like to put a trash enclosure at that location. We have a six-foot-high privacy fence. It'll be done right and nice. And again, that's one parking spot right there that we want to add. We, uh. Seventy-five parking spaces are required and provided on the site plan. And I'm gonna do bigger text on my next presentation. So, and then we've got the monument sign there. We're gonna make it look nice. We may even replace it. The existing detention basin we just talked about. We have a landscape plan that I showed you before, very nicely done. Here's some elevations with landscape plan, so we're gonna clean the place up. So really in summary, it's a major refreshing up of a worn-out property, thirty-five years old, but it's really substantially a good brick building. We're gonna clean up the parking lot, reseal and striping, new landscaping, work on some little detail items on the whole new interior. As I said, it's vacant right now, so the interior will all be new. We're gonna provide new tenants to a building that is currently vacant in South County. And we think we can hopefully be part of the revitalization of this stretch along Lindbergh Boulevard because we have more vacant properties down there than I as a South County and since nineteen sixty-eight would care to admit right now, but we're trying to get it going. So we're excited about this proposal. We appreciate your considerations. If you have any questions, Nick and I would do our best to answer them at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, anyone?
You got interested? Interested right now?
No, sir. Not, not, we haven't really.
Ever went there yet?
Solicited for retail users prior.
Thank you.
Were there any businesses that you would not go for being in this?
That we would not, if they approached us?
Yes.
To add some context, we did receive an email where there was concern whether or not you would lease this space to a medical marijuana dispensary. Is that something that you've considered?
If they approached us, um, I.
It's acceptable by St. Louis County ordinance, they approach us, we would consider it. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
I wouldn't go there myself, but.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, Mark, could I have your speaker card?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Hey, Chris?
Thank you.
How you doing?
Uh, good evening. My name is Chris Cuban. I represent the eighty-two homes within the Five Oaks subdivision. We have, uh, this property has been a problem property for many, many years. The previous owners, like the speaker said, has not kept this property up. We're very pleased with the new owners and how they have actually completely changed the detention basin because that was a cause for a lot of mosquitoes and problems within the neighborhood. The one concern that has been brought up to all of us that I think unanimously the neighborhood is against is a dispensary in that location for many reasons. Number one, there is a school within six hundred and seventy-four feet of this location. Secondly, there are two bus stops, one within fifty feet of this location, as well as another one within one hundred feet of this location. We strongly encourage and support the revitalization of this building and all the other vacant buildings along the south Lindbergh. And we do support what this owner has do, is doing in this case. The only stipulation that we request specifically is that there be no medical marijuana dispensary in that location. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any, anyone else would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, I don't think we need rebuttal. Do you wanna come back up?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, okay. With that, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition, those in favor. We got more?
Seven.
Let the record show eight. Those opposed are with concern. Let the record shows none. And that concludes this hearing. And with that, we'll go to the next item, PC thirty-two dash twenty-two, Stephanie Smith Adams.
This is PC thirty-two dash twenty-two, petitioner is Stephanie Smith Adams, request an amended C eight plan commercial district. Proposed users are childcare center, emergency respite care and all permitted C two shopping district users. The tract is point eight four acres in extent and located in northeast quadrant of Belle Fountain Road and Tramp Avenue. As you can see in the context map, the site is located in the mid-county and the site is highlighted in, outlining red in the aerial. So this is the land use map. You can see the site is located along the, within the commercial strip, which is located along the Belle Fountain Road, but also there are, the site is surrounded predominantly by single-family and multifamily houses. There are some uses like adult daycare centers, child daycare centers and fast food restaurants, et cetera. And this is the zoomed out aerial for you. And this is the public hearing notice located at the, at the site. We are facing the east. This is also facing east, but close to the Tramp Avenue. This is facing northeast. In the picture, you can see there is a single-family house. And this is facing north and this is the back of the single-family house. And this is looking south. This is through the side. This is looking east and you can see side proof pens and single-family house. This is also looking facing east. This is also a single-family house. And this is looking west. We are looking at the side. This is south, across the Tramp Avenue. This is facing west, Belle Fountain Road, Tramp Avenue intersection. This is also looking west, across Belle Fountain Road. This is north, along the Belle Fountain Road. Next, we'll listen to the petitioner's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm used, I'm not used to this, so.
You kinda have to point it towards this back door.
Okay, the site development plan is Isabella Enterprise LLC. So currently it is twelve thousand Belle Fountain Road is used as a dental office. It's two commercial parcels located on the property. Twelve thousand Belle Fountain, which is the west wing, is approximately two thousand eight hundred and eight square footage. Twelve thousand eighteen, which is the east wing, is approximately fifteen hundred square footage. Isabella Enterprise LLC would like to change the current zoning at twelve thousand Belle Fountain Road from the C eight commercial district with the use being dental office only to a C eight commercial district with the use being an emergency respite care center for foster care children, office space and/or daycare center. The use of the twelve thousand Belle Fountain, being able to operate as an emergency respite center for foster care children in the north county area would benefit current foster parents who may be overwhelmed and need a break for a few days, as well as the children's division of family services and other foster care agencies who are unable to place the children immediately with a family member or find placement in a foster home. That's when the respite care center will be available. Unfortunately, in this day and time, foster parents and respite care is a big need for the Missouri area. Office space, the property will be used for, it will benefit small business owners who may not need a lot of space, but just enough space to conduct their business. And then if the purpose of the property being used. And then, if the purpose of the property being used for a childcare center would benefit the working families needing care during those non-traditional hours, because the center will operate seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day.
Are you ready for questions?
I think your other exhibit, if you keep clicking through the other exhibit you sent us there as well. So that was the previously approved site plan from a twenty-eleven C-eight that currently governs the site. So Ms. Smith Adams would be utilizing the existing building.
Okay.
And then this outline where like the, this is, I believe, for the playground. It's fenced in, playground would be fenced in for daycare, for the daycare is towards the back. And then on the other side, where is the respite care? It's respite emergency foster care parking, then we have the respite emergency foster care facility. It's basically kinda, one side would be daycare, the other, emergency respite. And it's ample, ample amount of parking space. This was just a sketch of a drawing, basically outlining the same thing.
Basically setting it up, I'll say. My name is Michael Adams, and I'm Stephanie's husband. And those are some of the things that we're gonna do, how we're gonna have it set up. We don't have exact measurements of the building, but we have been in it and we looked at it. And those would be some of the rooms that will keep the foster kids in. And over on the other section over, we have marked daycare center. That would be for that. And then we also have the parking on both sides. Behind the home is actually our lot for parking as well. So, like she said, we do have plenty of parking, and it's pretty much it.
Thank you. Questions? Bill?
You mentioned it would benefit businesses, because you explained a little, elaborate on that a little more for us, please.
Are you talking about, you want for, when I was talking about if I did like office spaces?
Yeah, you had a chart there. You said it would benefit business, and I was just trying to see how that, you know, meld with the foster kids and how they would be separated or, you know, how would it fit in the whole picture?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
I understand what you're saying. What we would, what we was talking about is, what she was talking about is using, we got some offices in there too. If you can also, look, I forgot to probably mention it to you. On that back row, it's like two different offices in the main entrance when you go in. And we was gonna use that for office space, you know what I mean? If someone just needed to take care of some business boys, just office, you know, no, no one would have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we wasn't doing all three of them. Is that what you, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to figure.
No, no, it wasn't. No, this was just, like, if we, if we didn't do the daycare or if we didn't do the respite, it would be office space. So none of, the office space would not be going on at the same time if we did respite or daycare.
So on this plan, the office spaces would be for that, for the daycare use or for the respite care use?
Exactly, yeah.
Bill, will there be a specific spot set aside to fix meals for the children that stay there?
Yes, it's a kitchen there. I think it's, I think it's actually, it's a couple kitchens.
Anyone else? With the daycare, about how many students, children would you be looking for?
It'd be probably about twenty-five to thirty.
Okay. About how many employees?
That depends on the age, because it's a ratio, like if it's infants, it's four infants to one staff. So it just really depends on the age group that we're able to have in there, and that would be kinda based on the state when they come out and actually do their measurements to say, hey, when you can have, because there's so many square footage per kid as well.
And what age groups would you be?
For the daycare, we'll be looking at six weeks to thirteen years of age.
Okay. After-school activities or?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you said the foster children. How would you get those? How does that work? Does the state come in and put them there or?
Yes, it's basically the state, you know, I would be linked up with Children's Division, and it's constantly children or, you know.
So while they're waiting to get a forever home?
Correct.
They come to you guys?
Right, because, I mean, like I said, it is a big need right now, because if the social workers, if they're taking this kid, the child, out of, you know, from a home, and if they can't, those social workers cannot find placement or a foster parent that can take their child, that social worker is at work with that child, and that child is, you know, at their job, sleeping on a cot.
So if you're able to have the daycare and children, twenty-five children, perhaps, twenty-four hours, are you planning to do the foster kids at the same time?
Yes, it'd be a separate side. It's, that'd be on the other side.
The zoning ordinance, when it defines a childcare center, it does define it as caring for children through any part of the twenty-four hour day. But to ensure that emergency respite care was fully encompassed in the advertisement, we did call it out specifically, but it may fall under the childcare use itself.
Because currently, we do own daycare centers, and we are licensed for twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
Do you have one in the vicinity of this location?
Not in Belle Fountain, but in North County. It's four of them. We have one in Florissant, two in North County, unincorporated North County, and one in Hazelwood.
Oh, this should be your fifth one, huh?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing nobody, we thank you. Appreciate it. And with that, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal, so we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor, you get the vote.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Let the record show six. Those opposed are with concern. Let the record show none, and that concludes this hearing. Thank you.
So next would have been PC thirty-three twenty-two, which is the petition the commission earlier voted to grant a postponement to. So Gretchen, you'll have to skip through all that.
Okay, we'll go on then to thirty-four dash twenty-two. What is that, Jesla?
Jesla?
Jesla Development?
Good evening. PC thirty-four dash twenty-two, Jesla Development LLC is a request for an amended C-eight for one point three six acres, located on the southeast side of Lee May Ferry Road and southwest side of Mel Avenue. This site is also in South County, and it is two sites, actually. They're both outlined in red. As you can see from the land use map, the sites are surrounded by commercial uses, as well as some single-family homes. Here's a closer up aerial view with the two sites outlined in red. This is looking southwest on Keller Plaza. This is a different angle of southwest on Keller Plaza. This is looking south-southeast at the public hearing sign on the, our site. This is looking east across Mel Avenue at the Old Navy. This is looking east up towards Mel Avenue. This is looking southeast on Keller Plaza towards Mel Avenue. This is looking directly across south on Keller Plaza. And you can see the Sam's Club slightly in the background there. This is looking west through both sites. This is looking directly west at the first site, which was a former Jack-in-the-Box. On that first site, which was the former Jack-in-the-Box, this is looking north. This is looking north across Lee May Ferry Road. This is looking east along Lee May Ferry Road at the intersection between Lee May Ferry and Mel Avenue. This is looking west along Lee May Ferry Road. This is looking west through both sites. This again is on the Jack-in-the-Box property. This is looking southwest. This is looking north on the Jack-in-the-Box property from the western side. This is looking directly west at the second property. This is looking south on that second property on the western side. This is looking east into that second property building. And again, looking east onto that building. This is looking west at the neighboring property. This is looking southwest again, as you can see, the Sam's Club gas station and part of the Sam's Club. And this is looking east all the way through, back over to Mel Avenue through both sites. And next, we'll have the petitioner.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Brandon Harp, and I'm a principal at Civil Engineering Design Consultants. Here tonight, to behalf of Jesla Development LLC, with the managing member, Mace Nasevich, and he cannot be here tonight. We do have an architect of record on board for the, this will be a club car wash. Club Car Wash actually bought out tidal wave car washers throughout the St. Louis area. And then we also have a professionally prepared landscape plan in your packet, done by Randy Martis with Landscape Technologies. Again, tonight's public hearing, the request for PC thirty-four twenty-two, Jesla Development LLC is to amend the existing C-eight ordinance nineteen oh three eight that was established in the year nineteen ninety-eight at two properties, as was indicated, forty-five hundred and forty-five oh four, Lee May Ferry Road, six-three-one-two-nine, which is, the combined lots are one point three six acres. We are requesting amendment to this overall ordinance that was established back in nineteen ninety-eight. That was passed based on a preliminary development plan on the, at the time, that included a site plan, that included the number of buildings, the square footage, setbacks, things of that nature, based on that site-specific plan. Whereas that ordinance was established, in order to redevelop these two outlots, we're asking for three amendments to the ordinance, and then one consideration for the general county code. The first one is to add vehicle washing facilities as a permitted use. Currently, it is specifically excluded as a allowable use in the ordinance. Then there's a couple changes to the square footages of the building. That's just because the building we have would be just a little bit larger than the two buildings that are out there. And then a change to one of the front yard setbacks, and I'll go through all these in detail here in a second. And then the last item is a condition in the county code that talks about all drive-through areas, including but not limited to windy boards, stacking lanes, et cetera. In objects associated with drive-through areas should be located in the side or rear yard of the property and shall not cross interfere with or impede any public right-of-way. And I'll explain why we have to request that tonight. Again, the club car wash, they were started in two thousand and six. They have over a hundred facilities throughout the Midwest. Very well established. You may have seen them around town popping up, converting the tidal waves to club car washes. There's a few of them in unincorporated St. Louis County, and then throughout the area, St. Louis and Illinois. It's a tunnel car wash. You stay in your car. Hours of operation are seven days a week, seven to seven. And they do offer free vacuum facilities at all their locations. This is the aerial vision. You can see where it says site there in the middle. And just to show what's around there, what's briefly described, we have, we're part of the overall Sam's Development at the southwest corner of Lee May Ferry and Mel. Lee May Ferry is a road running east and west, left and right, and Mel is the one that deadens into Lee May Ferry at the signal. To the right is the south Lakeside Plaza, which is a large shopping center. And then South Point Center is up into the upper right. Zooming in a little closer to the site, again, the one point three six acres, it's an abandoned, closed, jiffy-lube-in-closed Jack-in-the-Box at that southwest corner. You can see that the site has two buildings on it, pavement, pretty much every score inch of the property, and then one drive entrance on the internal road system. It does not have access on the Lee May Ferry or Mel directly because of being the close proximity to the signalized intersection, and also the topography at that location. This property sits up quite a bit higher than that intersection, which was shown on the previous photos, and we'll show the retaining walls here in a second. Again, briefly what's described earlier, we are a C-eight zoning district. We have C-eight mostly around us. The two shopping centers are both C-eight. We do have an M-one across the street, and R-six multifamily to the northwest, and then an R-four residential to the lower right. We did receive a letter from the property owner that owns those three properties, those three residential properties, and that was submitted at the last minute to Mel, that we just received that actually today, and they're in full support of this development. Again, the two properties sitting with the access and the parking, the drive-through restaurant, and also the oil change facility there to the left. Both are not in operation today. Our proposed site plan is situated, as you see here, and it's basically approximately a five thousand square foot tunnel wash, hundred and forty feet long. They do vary from a hundred and forty to a hundred and forty-six. This site has very tight site constraints, so this one is shown as a hundred and forty. There are twenty vacuums, which are the, looks like parking areas to the south of the orange building there. And then we would be utilizing the existing drive entrance off the internal roadway. You'd come in, make a right, and go through the drive-through lanes, stacking lanes on the right side. There's three stacking lanes. Then you stay in your car, go through the tunnel, come out on the left side, and come back down, and then be able to go back out. The east-west driveway on the southern part of that is actually an access easement. So that has to stay intact, and that gives rights to the property to the west to use that driveway for cross-access and access management. This is how it sits on the site. Zoomed out a little bit further. And then, one request on the amendments was for the setbacks. The two red lines on the top and the right are the existing setbacks, the building setbacks. The pink line, I'm sorry, they look pretty similar, is fifty feet. It's kind of in the middle of the two lines there. And that's where we're proposing to move it from the red line, which is the eighty-five feet, over to the fifty. The outer red line is actually the parking setback, and so we meet that on the north and the east of the top and the right. The inner, the left red line and the bottom red line, that is the building setback. And you see the upper right corner of the orange building just barely clips that. And we're asking for that to go from eighty-five feet to fifty. And I have it moved over to fifty because there is a small pay building that's four feet by eight feet, that sits just to the left of the car stacking area, just to the left of that, that pink line. That's why it's moved over into that driveline at that location. Wanted to just show you real quickly the encumbrances that are on this existing site. We actually have two established front yards to public right-of-way, one to the north and one to the east, or the top and the right. Below, there is theoretically a front yard into an access drive that serves that shopping center. So we, in theory, have three front yards that we're dealing with. The red lines on here, the shaded red area, are easements that encumber the property. The lower left, large rectangular area is encumbered by the access easement that goes along that driveway, as well as utility easements. And then on the left, that's a utility easement. And then to the north and the east, there's a series of utility easements, retaining wall easements, permanent signal easements through St. Louis County, as well as the lower right corner is a traffic signal easements, retaining wall easements, et cetera. So the developable area of the property is pretty much outside those red areas, in addition to the topography, which I'll show you on a photo, and then also we have. In addition to the topography, which I'll show you on a photo, and then also we have to navigate the access easement that is there to the lower left. So in, in looking at how this property could, could fit in for this use, there was not an orientation that we could lay out that would allow, that would not allow the stacking to be between the building and the streets. And that was the last request of the city code where it's discouraged to not have the stacking between the right of way and the building. So this was that exception where all drive-through areas, including but not limited to menu boards, stacking lanes, trash receptacles, loudspeakers, drive-up windows and other objects associated with drive-through areas should be located in the side or rear yard of a property and shall not cross interfere or impede with public right of way. I'm not sure the intent of this ordinance, but under this specific property where we have a fixed drive entrance on the internal driveway, we have a cross-access easement that needs to be established. We have topographical issues and then we are encumbered with significant easements around the perimeter. I could not find a way to make this site work without having the drive-through on, on a front yard area between the building and the street. In order to try to mitigate that, as you have in your packet, we've proposed a an evergreen hedge that would grow to about 45, 42 inches tall around the southeast, east, northeast and north part of that drive-through stacking that would completely block the cars stacking, stacking in that drive-through stacking area. The lower picture in the lower right corner basically shows the site the way it sits today. You can see the retaining wall, the gray retaining wall kind of in the lower right corner. It's about five, six feet tall and there's a couple other feet additional above that that the site sits. So at the intersection, the cars sit down low. There is some greenery, et cetera, in the right of way. And then on top of that wall, we would be building another small wall. And then we would line that with a continuous shrub of evergreen hedge that would completely shield those vehicles from Mel Road and from Lee May Ferry Road. That was an effort to mitigate that requirement that St. Louis County has the ordinance to, to not be able to see those cars stacking. Again, it's a club car wash, it's a, I know that buildings are not part of this necessarily this middle and neither is landscaping, but we thought we'd give a clear picture of the quality of the project. This is a typical club car wash type project with a variety of materials, neutral tones, towers with lighting and the tile elements. And so again, we're, we're here tonight to ask you for any input from this commission or the public, any questions or concerns they may have for amending the ordinance to allow for, for this use based on the site specific plan. The ordinance again is, is about 24 years old. I, I don't think there's really any record that we could come up with on, on why it was prohibited, except for that it wasn't proposed at the time. And because it's a C8 ordinance, there's probably, wasn't one planned there, but again, there is an oil change, there's a gas station, there's a Sam's. There's another drive-through facility that was here on this property. So it is a, an area that would, would work very well for this type of use. Again, with the site restrictions, the topography, the easements, the cross-access, everything else we have to deal with, it's a very difficult site to lay out. We would have left to combine these parcels into one parcel, we'd have to vacate some internal easements to actually make this work, which we're in the process of doing. But this would allow both parcels to be redeveloped into a very nice development and serve, serve this area with a car wash. And again, trying to mitigate the requirement by the county for the, the vehicles in the, between the building and the front yard. We're proposing a dense continual landscape, evergreen hedge along there to, to shield that. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them for you.
All right, seeing none, we're okay.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Ain't none anyone who would like to speak in opposition or with concern? Want to come on down?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Connie Kuchar. I have been a resident of the Melville area for 45 years. For the past 21 years, we have lived within a mile and a half of the property being discussed in this proposal. From my personal experience, I know that the traffic congestion in that area can be a real issue at Melville and Lee May Ferry. Getting in and out of the Sam's Center there. And I'm concerned that this proposed car wash would only exacerbate those problems and likely impact the travel on Mel, which is primarily residential. Within two miles of this proposed car wash, we currently have two car washes on Lee May Ferry, 3701 Manor Drive and 3618 Lee May Ferry. There is a new car wash being developed at the former Steak and Shake, 7310 South Lindbergh. And another car wash being proposed at the former Mattress Direct site, 7, 7002 South Lindbergh, all within a two-mile radius. These car washes, the difference is they were already zoned for that use. This property is not. We do have the single-family residences along Mel, we have the apartments across the street. It's a very heavily traveled area already. Just don't need the extra, the traffic. So given the close proximity of the other car washes and the safety concerns with the increased traffic near those residences, I respectfully ask the board to deny this change in zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, would you like to come back up?
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Brandon Harp with CDC. The car wash would be replacing two commercial developments, a drive-through restaurant and a, an oil change place. This is a highly dense, dense commercial master plan development. There's a centralized intersection at Mel and the shopping center as well as Lee May Ferry. So a traffic study has not been requested, nor I would believe it would be justified for a redevelopment like this. But car washes like this typically take cars that are already on the road. It's typically not a destination site where you leave your house and go directly to a car wash and go back home. It's typically cars that are traveling down Lee May Ferry or Mel anyway. They come and get their car washed and continue on. So on other projects that we've done where we've had to actually do traffic studies, it's, it's basically taking cars off the road that are already there. It's not a traffic generator. In addition, it's replacing two commercial developments that are there currently in this whole shopping center with the Sam's and everything else. So this is a very small traffic component compared to the overall development that's still, that's already there.
Okay. Questions, anyone? Okay, we thank you, appreciate it. At this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition.
See two?
Let the record show two. Oppose or with concern?
Two. Two.
Let the record show two. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you. And with that, we'll go to the last item, which is 35-22 and 36-22 Provision Land Development.
Good evening. PC 35 and 36-22 Provision Land Development is a request for a change in zoning from NU to R3 and for a PEU in the R3 for a 2.7 acre tract on the south side of Vance Road, approximately 80 feet east of Strawberry Ridge Drive. As you can see from the context map, this site is in West County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. On the land use map, you can see that this site is just to the west of the city of Valley Park. And the majority of the development surrounding it is a single-family residential with one multifamily residential development to the west. And here's another aerial of the site where you can see some of that residential development. This is looking south into the site at the public hearing sign. This is looking west along Vance Road. Looking east along Vance Road. This is looking north towards Vance. Looking west at the existing single-family structure on the property. Looking north into the site. Looking west. Looking south at the neighboring single-family residence. This is looking west into the site. This is looking west towards the property line where you can see the neighboring subdivision. Looking southwest. And this is looking north towards the site. This is looking northeast along Monbert Drive. Looking southeast at one of the other neighboring residences. And looking south into the other development on Monbert Drive. And now the petitioner will have a present.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening again, Mark Doring, President Doring Engineering. The slow walker behind me is Mike Lawless. One of the reasons he's slow, I think Mike and I did our first project, he was one of my first clients, actually, when I started my engineering company in 1990. So, and actually the project we did was the Glen Eagles, it's subdivision directly to our east on this site and I'll show you in a minute. It was about 145 lots. And then to the east of that, we went with Mission Hills, about another 200 lots. And then to the west of us here, Strawberry Ridge, you did that before I cut my teeth and you lived in Strawberry Ridge. So Mike's done probably 400 houses maybe right there and even on the other side of Vance Road. So anyway, things happen and come around. So with that, Mike's going to tell you a little bit about his project and his visions for the site.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time. We've looked at this property and we've had our eye on this property. There's not a lot of property left out there on Vance Road. And we own the property across the street and we are at the bottom of a hill. And we are not doing anything to Monbert or to Eleanor, which is basically, I think Eleanor is a blacktop road and Monbert is predominantly a gravel road. And the people like it just fine that way. And so we are not touching those roads. However, we're at the bottom of the hill and we will be, and Mark will go into this a little bit later. But we are going to be putting some stormwater facilities in so that we will be helping those, we will be helping Monbert Road out. Because right now, a lot of that gravel washes out into Vance Road and we will be taking care of that. I'm not saying we're going to fix it 100%, but we are definitely going to help it out. And right now, all of the water is pretty much sheet flowing across this piece of property. We'll be picking that up with stormwater. We have, as, as Mark says, we've developed a lot of property along the Vance Road corridor. One of my sons lives in Strawberry Ridge in the house that I built. Another one of my sons is getting ready to build a house across the street. And all of that stormwater that we're going to be taking care of is going to go through a box culvert under Vance Road and across onto the property that we own and into, I believe that, which Fish Pot Creek. And, and will go on into the Merrimack River then. So I will let Mark go into the specifics, but we've got a 10-lot subdivision. And those homes will be able to entertain three-car garages, which we know the market out there has been clamoring for. And our price range will be 500 to 600,000 in an area that's probably predominantly around 300,000. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, and I will emphasize it more, but the stormwater situation out there is not good and because of our development, the rules associated with our development, we're actually going to improve those stormwater situations significantly. So thanks, Mike. North is up. That's Vance Road. That's Monbert Drive there. That's Eleanor runs up the hill there. The site slopes from the south to the north. In fact, it goes all the way down to the bluffs on the Merrimack River. And there is one heck of a large drainage area running to our site. Okay? And over here is Strawberry Ridge, which Mike developed prior to me. Over here is, what street is that, Mike? We did that one too, didn't you?
That's that's Gingerwood and Pepperdank Court, yeah. So that's Pepper Tree subdivision.
I apologize, guys, I'm going blind. Right there is the city of Valley Parks, city limits in that area there. And that was the Glen Eagles that Mike and did back years ago. And those were basically 60-foot lot, same-sized lots that we're doing here, basically. About 145 lots in that area. That is the Fish Pot Creek there. 360? I didn't charge you guys enough. And this is our tract here. And right here, there's an existing house and a house will be removed on our tract. Again, the 100-year floodplain is actually across Vance Road, it does not affect this project whatsoever. We're higher than that, our basements will be above the 100-year flood elevation. Subject tract is 2.71 acres. It's currently zoned non-urban and we're proposing an R3 to match the surrounding zonings with a planned environmental unit. What we want to do in that planned environmental unit, we want to go to a 58-foot wide lot, basically with five-foot side yards. That leads us to the same project that, product that a lot of builders have done, including Mike. A 48-foot wide house, which you'd normally see on a 60-foot lot. And it also allows for a three-car garage with that same product. To the west of us again, Strawberry Ridge, that's a zone R3. Strawberry Ridge was 50-foot wide lots, again, we want to go 58-foot wide lots. To the north, there is R3, across the creek, there is floodplain non-urban, across Vance Road, I'm sorry. This area up here is R2. Again, this was a 6,000 square foot lot, 60 by 100 in the city of Valley Park. And we have non-urban still zoned behind us to the south, heading up to the bluffs on the Merrimack. Over here again, that's still Strawberry Ridge, that's R3. Here's a picture of the Strawberry Ridge entrance, that subdivision, 35 years maybe?
Yeah, it was built in 89. Those are 5,000 square foot lots with zero lot lines. So every other lot, you have a zero lot line and then you have 10-foot in between.
That's a site picture, looking at our site from Vance Road, you can't see a whole lot there, except for a lot of vines on the trees. This is looking from our west corner of our lot down Vance Road to the east. At guardrail well, there is the box culvert. It's about, I forgot what it was exactly, I think it's eight feet wide, six feet deep. It's very large. It's a, represents a danger on our side because once you get past, you either hit that guardrail or if you get past that guardrail, you go down a very steep embankment to get to this flow line of the box culvert about 12 feet below there. We will be enclosing that whole system on our side of the property, making it much safer. And we'll also be providing a sidewalk along Vance Road there too. And this here is Monbert Lane looking back at our site. So what happens when it rains, all that water comes down from the bluffs back several thousand feet away. And it's a huge drainage area and that gravel washes out onto Vance Road, which you can see here. And then the county highway department has to go out there and push the gravel back onto, to Monbert. We will be improving that situation and I'll explain why. Good. So this is our site plan. Again, Vance Road up here on the north side, Monbert Lane there, Eleanor going up the hill. And that's Fish Pot Creek up there. And again, that's the existing floodplain on the other side of the, of the site. We're proposing 10 single-family dwellings. The houses will be from 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. And as Mike said, the price range 500 to 600,000 dollars these days. That's the world we live in. We have a 40-foot wide public drive. We do not propose any sidewalks on the site. St. Louis County ordinance allows, normally calls for sidewalks for streets having nine or more lots. This is a tight lot for us and so we're asking for a 40-foot wide right of way without sidewalk. And the whole reason for that is to get our lot sizes up in all honesty. So we're saving five feet on each side of the right of way. Difficult site, actually a unique layout there with this, call it a golf club hammerhead that is, does meet St. Louis County standards there for the cul-de-sac. Actually, a unique layout there with this, call it a golf club hammerhead, that is, does meet St. Louis County standards there for the cul-de-sac. But it was the best plan. We spent a lot of time actually coming up with this simple plan, but it's a very difficult site geometrically to work out. Twenty-six feet of concrete pavement, St. Louis County standards, be a public road. Again, that's a proposed five-foot sidewalk that we'll be putting out there on our expense to provide sidewalks to the area. We have a lot of common ground on this site. So, up here, we have a common ground landscape buffer. And that's also gonna be for water quality, that'll be cleansing the stormwater before it leaves our site. And then over here, we also got twenty-foot-wide. What's great about this layout, we have no houses backing up to Vance Road. And it turned out to be a really good layout for us. We have a twenty-foot minimum landscape buffer against Vance Road, which is a very good marketing tool that we're looking forward to utilizing. We're also gonna have landscaping against Monbert Drive there, too, we're gonna make it look nice. So, the common ground area in the eyebrow, it's not really an eyebrow on the cul-de-sac, will also be landscaped to match the perimeter landscaping. Over here, we're gonna have water quality, that's water cleansing again. And also, we're gonna have stormwater detention in this area to hold back the stormwaters from flooding downstreams. Abundant common ground area. In fact, twenty percent of this development is actually common ground. There's a lot to find on a small parcel like this. So, along Strawberry Ridge, from the front there to the back, there's six lots. They're fifty-foot-wide, five thousand square foot minimum. And on our proposal, we only have four lots back in there. So, again, I mentioned earlier, lots are bigger than what we parse, we match up against to the west there. Sanitary sewers are actually located right there at the top corner from Strawberry Ridge. And then they head out under the street into the Fish Pot Creek watershed. And so, we'll take that existing manhole there, and we will construct a line along these areas here. And that will service all our lots for sanitary sewer usage. Storm sewer, okay, so this site's a little unique. We are a bowl, we are the low side of the area, we take one heck of a lot of water. So, one of our big costs on this is gonna be, relatively, is gonna be storm sewer improvements. So, again, there's this box culvert there, and it is actually twelve-foot wide and six feet tall, going under Vance Road. It's huge. And it's, it's actually more box culvert than is needed, size-wise, to take the storm, which is unique to find something that old that's actually too big. So, that's a good, good plus. But again, it's open on both sides, we'll be enclosing our side, okay? First thing we have to do with the new water quality standards is, we have to detour off-site water around our water cleansing facilities. So, we're gonna pick up the water at the property line with that blue line. And we're actually, that's water coming downhill from the site, from the, from the south. And we'll detour that water, and we'll actually pretty much make a quickest route. And we'll introduce that into the box culvert, taking it through our site. But it does not go to our water quality or our stormwater detention, as the rules state. In addition, we're gonna ball-site stormwater bypass on Monbert Drive. As we indicated earlier, there's just a lot, a lot of water coming down Monbert Drive, okay? So, we're going to greatly improve that stormwater situation. Not because we're great guys, but that's because of the, the development code will require us to do, okay? But the water that'll come down there, we'll have a storm sewer line put into that new blue. And we'll catch a significant, significant portion of that water that now that goes out onto Vance Road, right there at the bottom right of that blue line. And we'll take that water, right where that arrow is, and put inlet also up at the corner. And that stormwater will be directed via pipes directly to that box culvert, then out to Fish Pot Creek. So, there's a lot of improvements here that are gonna be very helpful to St. Louis County and St. Louis County Highway Departments, for sure. So, those are our bypass routes. Now, for our stormwater, we have to catch on our site, cleanse, and also detain. We're gonna have two inlets down here, again, the site flows to the north, straight up. And we'll pick up two turbulence there before they would enter the Vance Road, keep that water off of Vance Road. And then we'll pipe that directly over to here, and that's where we will cleanse the water before it leaves the site. Once we cleanse it there with the best management improvement, we will take that water, and then we'll take it back out to that big box culvert that has plenty of capacity. Also, in addition, we'll have a low point here on our golf club head, let's call it. And that water will be directed right over here, which is gonna be, again, that's gonna be stormwater as well as water cleansing. So, we're gonna detain water there, but we're also gonna cleanse it in that one location. And that water, again, once we treat it, we'll take it out to that pipe along Vance Road. And that'll go directly to that box under, undergoing these Vance Road. So, there's a lot of good stormwater improvements that actually happen with, happen with development sometimes. And this is one of these developments that actually is very positive when it comes to storm sewer and the neighbors. This is a typical house that we may build on here, okay? We like, because we can have three-car garage, very much in demand in this area. We like this area, we like the school district, we like the whole thing. So, that's a house that we would be offering. In summary, we think this is a fantastic small development, ten lots, it's a fun little project. The lot sizes match, and buildings will match the surrounding properties and neighborhoods. The property does not alter Monbert Drive or any, add any traffic to it, as Mike indicated. We've met with several people on Monbert, and I think the message, we had some layouts actually modifying Monbert Drive, several of them. And we think this makes better sense for us, as well as I think neighbors appreciate this labor, this layout also. We will say, we have major stormwater improvements on Mon, Monbert Drive and Vance, and that will be a big help to the area. Major safety include, improvements by closing that big box culvert on the south side of Vance Road. So, it's just a very dangerous situation, it's car, you could either hit the guardrail, the guardrail will go away. There'll be at least twenty feet of recovery area for any car that might leave the area there. Or if somebody leaves before that guardrail, they're going down a very, very steep incline. We have no lots fronting or touching Vance Road, we think it's a wonderful layout. And we have large green space areas previously discussed, and we love the location. We're excited about this proposal, we appreciate your considerations. If you have any questions, Mike Lawless, I would be happy to try and answer them, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mark, the two areas where you're gonna cleanse the water?
Mm-hmm.
How deep is that? And explain the cleansing process for us, please.
Yeah, sure. So, since two thousand eight, we've been tried to have cleansing, everybody remembers detention, we've had that for years, okay? So, these will be rain gardens, in this case, there are several ways of doing cleansing, okay? And what the rain garden does, depending on the side of the tributary areas, but usually, there's a, what they call a four-bay, and that's usually just rocks. And so, when trash, paper trash washes off the street, it's stopped by these rocks, and that has to be maintained time to time, taken out by the subdivision, okay? If it's a small drainage area, which in this case, the first one is, okay? You don't need that four-bay where it takes out the large, the large pollutants, okay? But after it leaves that, if it, whether it has a large pollutant takeout or not, then it goes to a depression, okay? And that's planted with all kinds of different native plants that are real good at taking out pollutants out of the water, out of the stormwater. Oils, phosphorus, and some things like that. That's actually goes down about two feet, maybe three, okay? And it only, water depth in there only goes to a foot and a half, okay? But below that, then there's four feet of different type soils that filter out the, the, the impervent, the pollutants out of there. And also work with the root system of these plants. And then the water is then cleaned, and that's when we take it out from that small one to that box culvert.
So, it goes down and it sucks it out?
I've built these before. The water is, it, it gets absorbed into some sand and rock. And then it, then it is released into, into another part of it. And then it, and then there's a pipe that takes it out to that, to that culvert.
So, you have a pump or something in there?
No, it's all gravity driven. It's still all gravity driven. And it also gives the water a chance to seep back into the ground, because it'll sit there for twenty-four hours. So, it also, it's a detention basin itself, too. It's another way of decreasing the runoff, but because the water, hopefully, will go into the ground. Now, in our areas, we have a lot of clay and rock, it doesn't work as great as we'd hope, okay? But it just filters down four feet, okay? And then there's a pipe system under there that just takes it right on out from there, once it filters down to four feet. And it takes some time to go through that four feet.
So, it looks like we're getting rid of the detentions and retentions or?
So, the other one, the big one, that's what we call bio-retention, which is also a rain garden and stormwater detention. So, we still have those.
Oh, the big one there?
Yeah.
That's gonna be, okay.
But they kinda nest them, and inside of there, there'll be plants, too. But at that point, then we start counting the volume of water sa, stored in there, against the old-fashioned detention requirements. So, we're still gonna have them, okay? And now, the other one, we'll probably have a big enough drainage area, we'll have this, what we call the four-bay, which will be a place that'll actually take out trash and hard, and big solids, instead of just a little suspended solids.
Okay, on the larger one, how close is that to Mon, uh, Drive?
About fifteen feet, the water edge would be fifteen feet there.
So, it wouldn't flow?
No. And again, we gotta catch the water coming by Monbert, we can't take it in there. Okay, we have to take it around, so that's why we have the series of stormwaters, getting that water underground, and improving Monbert Road greatly, and Vance Road.
Looking at the chart, lots seven and eight, it looks like it's, what, about twenty feet from there? Those others, those lots?
I'm sorry, seven and eight are those two lots?
Yeah, those two.
So, there's another, about fifteen feet of common ground behind them. So, we set these lots up to have a house that would be handled as fifty-four, fifty-five feet deep, and then another fifteen feet for a deck. Okay, so, we didn't wanna come back in there and ask them forbearances, because Mel wouldn't like me then.
They'll, they'll come anyway, Mark, it's not you.
Actually, she got me on that one.
It looks like you have some water going through lot eight underneath, somewhere there.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Uh, underneath lot eight, I think I saw in your previous.
We had a pipe that went through there?
A pipe running through there someplace.
Right there, that red one?
Okay, yeah. So, that's running how deep?
Oh, that's a, that's just a curbinlet that catches the water in the area of the street there. So, it'll start off four or five feet deep, and be about six or seven feet deep total. And we'll actually keep that up higher, because then we can keep our stormwater basin up higher out of the ground. Otherwise, we'd be digging down deeper and deeper.
A quick question, how, how, what's the diameter of these pipes that are catching the water?
Good question. Haven't sized them yet exactly, but from my experience, the one we just talked about, it'll be about, it'll be twelve inches. There's not a whole lot of water in that area at the end of cul-de-sac. Same thing for the pipes up in the top left there, okay? Monbert Road is a bigger question, okay? That could be a thirty-inch, could be a thirty-six-inch pipe, okay? And that will be done when we get to detailed design, and it'll be checked by MST as well as St. Louis County to make sure that we put the, the correct pipe for the capacity required, which is function of the flow and the slope. And those will become public and maintained by MST.
The box culvert that you were talking about, that's that concrete thing with the openings on the side?
Yes, sir. And this one is, it was shocking when I went out there and saw it. I wasn't looking for something that big. Years ago, we didn't do them that big, but it was, it was big, and it was da, actually dangerous, it really was.
Oh, yeah. And go through there. Kid. Okay, anyone else's questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we thank you. At this time, is there anyone representing?
Thank you.
A group or individual who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern?
My name is Diane Hart, and I live where the, the three lines are inside that property. Harshue, I live inside of that harshue, you understand what I'm saying? All three lines there is my property, a total of three hundred and seventeen feet.
Go ahead, speak in the microphone.
Yeah, can you come up to the microphone? Thank you.
I'm sorry, do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
No.
Okay, so you've got the green, 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 and my property is that whole section.
Between lot five and lot six.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, Mike Lawless and Mark Daring have said that lot six is gonna be six feet from my property line. Melissa said the rule is eight feet. And I do not, okay, I have, I showed, you have pictures. I have a sycamore tree, sycamore tree that's like a hundred and fifty feet tall. And if you look at the bottom of it, there's a whole natural fence line. And I seriously think that when they do dig in six feet away, they will destroy that sycamore tree. And I don't think they should destroy my property for profit. Do you know what I'm saying? I, I understand that they're gonna put a massive amount of people and box these houses close together. But I don't think it is right for them not to follow the rules and end up destroying my property.
Is that tree on your property?
Yes. It's, it's a couple feet from the boundary line. You see the tree, and, and the whole, the property line is lined with rows of shereen. And, and it's like a wonderful fence. And I'm into nature and, and not building white fences and stuff like that. And I, I just adore that, that, that area right there. It's the only area I have that's flat, you know? It's a massive hill coming down. All my other yard is, is part of the hill. This is the, it's a huge tree. And it's very, very, very healthy.
How old is the tree?
I'm sorry?
How old is the tree? Any idea?
No, I've been there for about twelve years, since two thousand and eight, and it's always been tall and healthy. And it's not any threat to falling over anywhere. And, and even if it did, it certainly won't be on any neighbor's property, it would.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, anybody? Okay, we thank you, appreciate the comments.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition or with concern?
And I could take your speaker card as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is Lavinia Manuel. My husband and I live at forty Monbert Drive, which is directly across the road from the house that's going to be demolished. I'm a chemical and civil engineer, and I spent five year, five years working at the Department of Public Works in Australia. I designed sewage treatment plants, and I did construction project management. And I've got three specific concerns that I would like to address tonight. The first one is stormwater, about construction, traffic, and noise, and environmental safety concerns. So, the first one's stormwater. So, as the proponent mentioned already, thirty-seven Monbert Drive is an essential part of the Eleanora-Monbert neighborhood. It's located at the bottom of the hill, and it drains the water into Fish Pot Creek. And this area cannot be removed without replacing its role in the stormwater management. There are twelve mature trees. If you look in the bundle that we gave you, it's Attachment B. I've got all the trees listed on there, as well as I could, and about an acre of very dense vegetation. These provide a vital role in the absorption of excess water. And the proposed landscaping will not be able to meet the functional needs. They're talking about forty-five trees about this diameter, and two trees this diameter, and about a hundred shrubs. So, we are very, very concerned. It appears that these current plans have not been considered. They're looking at the, the lot independently, and not accounting for the huge amount of stormwater that comes down from the rest of the hill next to the property. The proposed grading and landscaping of thirty-seven Monbert will disrupt the natural water flow. And we're concerned about how it will cause flooding on the lower portions of the road and onto vents. If you look at Attachment D, that is a photo of the flooding that happened on our road, onto vents. And you can see a before and after photo with all the gravel that was washed out onto the street. I'm also, we're also very concerned about the insufficient detention capacity that they've got listed in these plans. We do not feel like this is sufficient for detention for the amount of water that we see during major store, uh, water events. I'd also like to address construction, traffic, and noise. Monbert Drive is a narrow, privately-owned gravel road with no street parking that residents maintain to mitigate flooding and damage. So, we ask that all-site-related traffic access be from Vance Road, and that parking be provided onsite. Also, perimeter fencing to prevent any foot access between the worksite and Monbert and Eleanora. any foot access between the worksite and Monberg and Eleonora. Our house is 27 yards away wall to wall from the house to the demolished site. This, this house to be demolished has a poured concrete basement, so I'm concerned about noise during demolition. My baby naps during the day, obviously. I'm a homeschool mom, so we're home most of the day. We tested a 95 decibel power tool. It registered 70 decibels at 27 yards away. According to the CDC, WHO, and EPA, 75, 70 decibels over long periods will cause hearing loss. So even if they could control the noise level of all the equipment at that perimeter where it's 27 yards away from our house, I'll be shouting at the kid. To be heard, a normal conversation is about 60 to 65 decibels. And babies are not recommended to be exposed to more than 65 decibels. So I do have serious concerns about hearing loss, just about our environment at home. Also with environmental safety and construction, this house to be demolished is an older house, and it is likely to contain vermiculite in the insulation. This often contains asbestos. So I'm concerned about friable asbestos being released and subsequent health request, uh, health effects. We have many more concerns that I've detailed in the document with illustrations that I don't feel like I have time for right now. But I do want to thank you for the opportunity to bring these to your attention and to voice our very, very serious concerns.
Questions, anyone? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments.
Oh, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Oh, go ahead. I knew you were.
Hello, my name is Dwayne Manuel. My wife and I own 40 Monberg across the road. Our home is currently tucked away in a wooded community. My wife and I met in graduate school and committed our lives to raising children who are kind and do unto others as they would, we'd have them do unto you. My wife chose to set aside her career to use her Christian education degree to homeschool our children. I work part-time consulting IT for government and others serving in not-for-profits. We chose a home that fit our values of simplicity, nature, and good neighbors, and a home we felt we could pay off with hard work, which we achieved in 2016. We see the plans as proposed could potentially harm our property, our plans and dreams. Our, our home has experienced stormwater issues originating from a neighboring subdivision that we currently have mitigated, managed, and carefully controlled. And unfortunately, many people in our neighborhood believe that that stormwater is coming from the Strawberry Ridge neighborhood that has been developed around us. However, this new development as proposed will significantly alter the landscape of our stormwater solution and create a series of problems beyond our ability to handle. We are concerned about property damage. Any slight alteration of the road and water flow near the junction of Eleonora and Monberg would cause our home to flood during moderate to heavy rain events. The plans as submitted will significantly change the watershed and change or eliminate natural water discharge points. This flooding will not only be a nuisance, but could cause danger to those who travel on Vance Road. We believe the demolition and the construction process has a high possibility of causing substantial injury to our property on 40 Monberg. Any misplacement of rock or dirt could lead to catastrophic events for us. This was the case in 2019 when a county truck with good intentions removed gravel off of Vance and placed it in the gravel at the junction of Monberg and Eleonora. This kind act unfortunately changed the course of the water, the course of the water, which redirected into my yard, then directly into my basement, leading to 12 inches of stormwater. This cost us many personal belongings and complete damage to appliances in the basement. Photos of the watershed event are submitted in our written explanation. Even if construction is successful, we are concerned about property, loss of property value. Our home will lose its charm of being tucked in the woods and will become isolated and out of place. No longer will our oversized windows face large trees and a lovely neighbor, but its attention upon and a back of neighborhood. We will lose two thirds of our neighborhood. We are concerned about loss of privacy and community. Our single story house with oversized windows with the family room and the bedroom facing Monberg will now be in direct view with two story homes. After this development, 40 Monberg will have none of the benefits of which we purchased and paid for over the last 10 years. But we will have to assume all of the risk to property damage and that nuisance, health, safety, and financial loss. We do not want to stand in the way of progress, but we feel to properly rezone this area, 40 Monberg needs to be considered protected, purchased at a reasonable price, and incorporated as part of a proper solution that controls the watershed. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition or with concern?
Can I ask him a question?
Yes, you wish. Excuse me.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes. You'd like to ask your question?
What are, what are the houses selling for or praised for in your area? Um, it is, it varies, but in the hardware school district.
I mean, in your area?
It's just the area. We don't have any houses that are sold. So there's, I had a developer who came by, or a friend who builds homes. He came and, oh, okay.
I'll take that. Thank you.
Jason Longhurst, I own 34 Monberg Drive, which is just south and kind of catty corner from what's being built. We bought our house just over a year ago. And I share some of the same feelings that they do and have expressed. But we bought our home for just over $260,000, relatively the same size of what the homes that they're proposing to put in on a larger lot.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none. Petitioner, you want to come back up?
Yes, sir. We appreciate the comments and the opportunity always to address the comments. Mrs. Charde, the first speaker, again, her house is in that wedge there. I couldn't tell you where that tree is at today because we have done the detailed boundary survey, TOPOL. It may be on her property. It may not be on her property. Okay. But what I will tell you is that our work will stay on our lot as required by St. Louis County law, or we will be responsible in court for damaging anything that happens on her property. Okay. So that would be a side yard on there. And we're asking for a side yard of five feet, not six or eight. We're asking for five feet, just to be very clear on that. Okay.
But Mark, just to weigh in, the perimeter setbacks cannot be reduced with the PEU procedure. The perimeter will always have to meet the R3 requirements.
Okay. So, okay. So you got me, Mel. You're right.
But I can, I can send that in an email if that helps.
Yeah. But no, I think you are right. I have to go back to my years of doing this.
No problem.
But you're right. So that would be, R3 would be an eight foot side yard.
Correct.
So that, that would be an eight foot side yard. Thank you, Mel. I appreciate that.
Sure.
As for the manuals on lot, on number 40 Monberg, it's across the street from us. There's 25 feet of right of way, which we do not intend touching whatsoever. So I don't think we will be touching their property. Again, it's, this is the old man in me, and a lot of you've heard this too, but it's all our dream in this country to purchase a lot that may be 60 feet by 100 or whatever it is, and then be next to two acres of somebody else's property and enjoy their property and their view and not, not think that they should develop it. But I think I made a pretty good case originally for the improvements that we actually will be doing for storm sewer here. And my plans will be reviewed. I'm a licensed state of engineer, state of Missouri, Illinois, other states. Okay. Been doing this for 30 years. My plans will take weeks, months to design and then look at all this stuff, spend a lot of my clients' money. And then also with the infrastructure, they will be reviewed by the engineers at MSD, and they will be reviewed by the engineers at St. Louis County. Okay. And that's the protection that we provide here in St. Louis County. And I'm a proud St. Louis County citizen to make sure that development happens in a very good, positive way for all the adjoiningers. Okay. Again, we will help the situation out immensely. I laid that out to you originally, and I think it makes a lot of sense. What I did, we were talking about water quality and detention, and all those things are developed by people much smarter than me on how to minimize the impact of development, okay, of new projects. Okay. We all would like to not have a truck grading in our, on our property next shore to us, but their house wouldn't have been there if they weren't allowed to grade and have a truck build a house on their property. But one of the things that we go into, and we start to talk about it, but there is a thing called groundwater recharge. We have to mimic the amount of infiltration that goes into the ground when we're done with this development now, that goes there as the existing. Not only the water that leaves the site can't be increased with the detention, we have to take care of groundwater recharge so it doesn't affect the water tables and things like that. There's multiple pages and calculations that, again, I didn't set the rules, but the rules are set by very smart people. And between detention and stormwater and groundwater recharge calculations, I will go through literally 150 pages of calculations to comply with the rules of MSD in St. Louis County to make sure that we minimize any impact to the environment today. It's not like it was 20 or 30 years ago. Okay. But yes, there will be an impact to the environment. And one of those impacts will be 10 very nice quality homes for people starting out in St. Louis County to buy a house at a, at a location that they like to be. So we look at this being a very, very positive thing for the area and a very positive thing for the stormwater on Vance Road as well as Monberg Road. So if there's any questions, I'd be tickled to try and answer them.
Anyone? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And with that, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor?
See three?
Let the record show three. Opposed or with concern? Six.
Six.
Let the record show six. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you all for coming.
And then for the planning commission, just to confirm, for the meeting next week, would 4:00 PM be a reasonable time for the, a video conference executive meeting?
You have Zoom?
I will send an email to confirm with everyone.
Okay. With that, we need a motion to adjourn. So move. Second discussion, all those in favor, votes, ayes, have it. And we're adjourned until Monday.
Till Monday. Online. Thanks, everyone. Wasn't so bad. Yeah, I can see Jacob is over there.
Yeah, we'll put Jacob over there.